There we go, here we are. It's a tunnel meeting number 119, it's October 15th, 2024. And today, we're being joined by Daniel, Amayal, Andrew, Ashley, Kali, Asse, Guillermo, Tuso, Karim, Malik, Sergio and Vani. Thanks all for being here. And yeah, as you can see on screen, there's an outline of the agenda. We start off a couple of mentions, and then we move to RND and LATAM on OpenCock, Hybrun and Meta. And then we have an announcement on the BGI Book Club. And then I want to quickly talk about the ASI Summit in Bangkok. And yeah, where it makes sense to have some ambassadors over there. Then some announcements coming from both Marketing Guild and Education. And if we at that point have still some time on the clock, there's room for open topics. But we won't get started without a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people all in tune with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and its ecosystem. And we want to contribute to it. And there's a wide variety of self-organizing workgroups through which this can be done. And yeah, we have workgroups on pretty much any topic. So if you're interested to help out, we do have a fitting workgroup for you. Do up onto our Discord server. There's a how-to-joint section, which will tell you how to join. So hope to see you there. Then, yeah, a couple of mentions, some updates, a couple of events. One thing that was pushed about two hours ago, I believe, was an upcoming merger between Singularity DAO, Kojito Protocol and SelfKey. And basically, it's the best to check the website for all the background information. There's a lot. You maybe recognize two of these projects being Singularity Net ecosystem, and SelfKey is an external party. And there will be a vote on this merger. It's basically, it's simplest to check the website. It's singularityphi.ai. And that has a light paper, has announcements, all the background info you might need. Do check it out. And then I want to put a little reminder for tomorrow's 18 UTC NewNet Community All Hands. It's their second Community All Hands, so they're, well, in the starting blocks, let's say. It's still early phase, but would definitely recommend if you have the time, quickly check the schedule. I assume it overlaps with, it doesn't overlap with one of our calls. So that's a, that's a good thing. Yeah, and then earlier today during Governance Workgroup, we had a retrospective session on the past three quarters of consent process around budgets. And basically, right now, there's a whole bunch of things, topics to discuss, to hash out together with all of us, seeing how we go about this in the future. And well, it will be the theme of the upcoming couple of Governance Workgroup sessions. First one being on Thursday, 14 UTC. And if you checked the Governance channel before that, call there will be a bit of, yeah, asynchronous figuring out which topics to prioritize. So if you're interested in having a say in that, do jump on the Governance channel. And you can also find the recording of today's call there. I was getting a report, the video wasn't properly showing there, but I'll look into that after the tunnel. Just wanted to give it a quick shout out. And then, yeah, right now, it's an ongoing event. It's the Twin Protocol Token Launch. This is interesting for HIX holders who had their tokens during time of the ASI merger vote, because that's when they snapshot HIX holdings. And you might have allocations based on that. If you're interested, do check it out. Quickly, let me verify the website. The whole launch is actually on twintoken.ai, and has all the background information, if you're interested in that. I think that covers the mentions. If there's any questions, please do raise your hand. Happy to answer anything. And if not, we'll move on to the first actual agenda item. And for that, it's great to see Guillermo. Put you right on top of the, of the menu. So yeah, the floor is yours. Do you want the screen share or?
Hey, everyone. Yeah, please. Yeah, thank you. You already know my dad's schedule. I'm gonna jump off to pick up friends from school. So that's a good one. Thank you, mate. Yeah. First thing first, this is a new acquaintance. Let me share this. We talked about this. So the foundation is reaching out. And we need to respond. We are in charge of spreading the word around, but not only that, also being part of a development. So we were mentioned this the other day. For the last month, we've been thinking with LATAM how we can help and participate on the Meta and OpenCock Challenge for onboarding new developers. And having our, the idea to push the envelope on the region. We came up with the idea, first, we participated on the Meta Language Biweekly Meetings, where we lead by Neil and another members of the Development Team for OpenCock, Hybrun. I have to say, it's hard to follow. Even my, my English is pretty good, also because of it's kind of a on a second level of knowledge-based for getting into it. So if we want to do this properly, in onboarding new members from the LATAM, we should go one step behind and kind of start from scratch. And for that, we draft a small roadmap with a concept idea of what we will try to do. We will try to emulate, but start from zero, draft, say, translate documentation, onboard people from the region. There's a lot of Latin power on the founder, family of Singularity Net, like Andres, Mario, members that have been working. I reached them out to help us. They have a lot of shit on the table, so kind of to guide us on where should we start? And the idea will be to create, use this async sync methodology of building something, instead of just going through documentation and and, you know, reading, reading and reading. Sometimes it's better just to walk, and walk small step, baby steps, and do that onboarding. First, use some of the developers on our team. And why not use this opportunity to onboard new members from the LATAM? And with this idea of, yeah, empowering the language and providing some knowledge in our region to be part of this revolution towards the HAI. And for that, we kind of draft a small, stupid first four-step draft. And onboard Damian Juan, that is a part of a great project from LATAM that is trying to build on the RFPs for Meta that are already on the funding. See when they already start onboarding ideas. And Andres, that is a developer that I worked for for years, with a lot of knowledge, kind of first educate them, then be able to educate others. That will be the stupid one, one step at a time. And yeah, introduction. It is pretty, so if you know some languages, it's easy to onboard. At the same time, there's a big paradigm with the Atom brackets on this, this language, and it's quite abstract. So you need to build on usual cases. And the idea will be to, yeah, kind of build like a small four-step roadmap for creating a program that then we can scale, say. And if some go to the next second level, we can still have a first level and keep onboarding people from, you know, keep the door open on the lowest level and keep growing in terms of complexity. I still need to reach Serke. I touched bases yesterday with Haley to see if she can help on reaching out and to understand what are the complexities on the exploration. And figure out if when we have draft, there is this four-step simple, say, yeah, draft of an idea of how we can onboard this. And I have this four-step, and again, use use case, create a use case, even if it's a small one. And then try to translate complex, complexity into what we learn. That would be like a second phase. So the challenge in this quarter will be, so I'm part of LATAM and the RND, how we can make this thing kind of merge. We're gonna have a lot of time on our weekly meetings on the RND also. Because, you know, we do updates on developments. Now we're gonna have free developments building. And they're not gonna be updates every week, for sure. It would be like, oh yeah, we just moved this piece here. So why don't we use the proper time? We have a lot of operation budget. So I was, I reached Kisi and also Kenichi, and I know, I know Rojo. Other members are gonna be excited about this. So the idea will be to discuss, starting tomorrow, how we can yeah, yeah, create something for always the same kind of strategy. Within the RND, probably have something for the first quarter of 25, probably, that we can but we already have operational budget. So we use it properly, we can have a one month, one of our four weekly meetings, we can take one of them, straight to Meta, instead of updates. And to put our efforts into bringing some use cases from the, from the Git and the repos from the, from the developer team that we can still screen and try to understand whether, what is this happening? And probably why not invite some of Neil's team to come and and share the knowledge and teach us a little bit of how we can and that way educate all the, all the young developers of the field. Probably figure out how we can impact from the RND. So yeah, that will be the challenge. Let's see where we get. Thank you again for this. So that will be that.
Thanks a lot. And yeah, great initiative. That's, that's just all around good stuff. Meta Coders Sessions, a little shadow there, actually. There's, there's one this coming Friday at, let me grab the time, 14:30 UTC. It's biweekly. So yeah, this Friday, there will be one. But yeah, following this up and connecting it both to the RND and the LATAM Guild. Perfect. What can I say? It's just, it's really the way to go. Yeah, that's it. Awesome. Any questions in the room? Or remarks or ideas or? Silence. Let me go back to the screen share in that case. Yeah, great stuff. Thanks again. I imagine both RND and LATAM channels would be the place to further, well, discuss or ask or should be good. It kind of makes me wonder if we should have a Meta Coders channel, but well, maybe not.
We'll figure that out. We'll figure that out later. Yeah, but thank you for the time and everyone join tomorrow to the RND. I forgot the time right now, but yeah, probably we can brainstorm on how we put this together. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, that's at 17 UTC tomorrow. Cool. Then, next topic would be the introduction of the BGI Book Club. And I believe I saw Lulu in the house earlier. Yes. Lulu, yeah, if you want the floor, it's yours.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, so tomorrow, we're starting the, officially starting the BGI Book Club. Lots of people are super excited about this because we are going to go through the Consciousness Explosion written by Ben and Gabriel, which in itself, getting through that book is like, basically, you're getting a certification in understanding technology and consciousness. Quite a beautiful thing. So yeah, the, we're gonna space it out pretty well. It's gonna be biweekly. We're gonna do maybe one or two chapters at a time, pretty slow. We're gonna pace it out to basically, we'll finish right before BGI 25 next year. So yeah, then maybe we'll have a little get-together at BGI. But yeah, so I'm gonna be the main facilitator. But of course, Ben is gonna try to make a lot of the meetings too. Gabe will try to meet a lot of the meetings. Others, Esther and Haley will also be facilitating sometimes as well. Even if you don't read the chapters that we have gotten to for that week, you can always still come and participate because it's not about forcing you to read. It's about us coming together and having this collective intelligence together. And it, you know, it doesn't matter how fast or slow you read, as long as we're coming together and talking about these very important subjects as we get closer and closer to our ADI being everywhere, our BGI being everywhere. So yeah, and this is, we have, we've officially become, begin our, the Ethical AI Initiative. We're still getting that name solid, but yeah. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to me, Esther, Haley about it. I'm gonna be the main facilitator, but we do have a Telegram group. I can post a link in the chat to that if anybody wants to join, because that will probably be where we post the most information. And then we just changed one of the channels on Discord to the Book Club channel. I did make a post, but I got flagged by the bots as being a spammer, as it always does me. So I'm waiting to be unblocked so I can post once again. Yeah, I'll drop that link. Let me grab it. Yes. So yeah, Telegram, and then I'll try to keep the posting on Discord for reminder. We don't have any of our own socials yet. We're still posting stuff through the Singularity Net blog and Twitter and LinkedIn and all that. So yeah, but let me grab the Telegram, and I'm sure like all of your own Discord, so that is an ease of access as well. But yeah, please come. We, it is a, think of it as kind of like how the roundtables work, but we're just, we just have more content that we're focusing on for, you know, something like more context, instead of just like a general question. It's like we have context and then we'll also have questions and well, you know. It probably won't always be the same for every time, but I'm sure it's gonna be a lot of fun. Let me drop that link and I'll stop talking because I will just start rambling. But yeah. I will drop the, the blog link too, because it has the link if you want to get the PDF of the Consciousness Explosion. But they are available by hardback from like Barnes and Nobles and Amazon and stuff, but if I can find a link, feeling very, there we go.
Awesome. Thanks a lot. And I'll get you started on the Discord link posting. It's set too strict, but for a good cause. But yeah, you definitely should be able to post. Yeah, just to make sure that the channel is under the BGI Summit section. So it's even above the deep-funding section. And second channel there is the Book Club channel. Yeah, great stuff. So tomorrow, both Ben and Gabriel will be on?
Yes, it's anticipated that both of them are gonna be there tomorrow.
All right, cool. Quick check in the room. Any questions, comments? The Telegram image of that group, I forgot about that. We can update that, just saying. It's a five-year-old image, if I remember. All right. Yeah, thanks a lot. Then we're moving on to the next topic. And yeah, hope to see many of you tomorrow there. And yeah, there will be a quick mention of the, of the topic. Earlier today, some people chimed in on the Ambassador General channel on Discord about the Singularity Net Ecosystem Festival and the Super Intelligence Summit, November 11, 10 and 11th in Bangkok. Yeah, there was, I would prefer way more discussion than input, but the input given there was quite good. I believe most people agreed with what Vanessa mentioned. If we send people there, we should select people that are already geographically close, not just on cost savings, but also on, you know, carbon footprint side of things. Yeah, quite agree with that. Also, Vanessa asked about the online side of things. The Ecosystem Festival. Short answer, yes, there will be online. Before fully saying the wrong things, I personally need to triple-check before and now say things that's incorrect. But yeah, we can, in a way, the bar is lowest, right, in contributing on a online version. Seeing there's no travel and accommodation costs. So yeah, we can most definitely do that, I would say. Yeah, it's just a bit unsanely people there. We do have people relatively local, I guess. Would make sense. It's just I'm a bit stuck on how to progress on it, because for BGI, we asked for interest and exactly the amount of people that indicated interest, that was, was the same amount as the number of slots we had. That was based on support from Foundation side. The budget is practically speaking on this one is so tight, we won't have much support from Foundation side. So we would be organizing this ourselves and also paying for it ourselves. And yeah, then it brings the question, who's paying for it, right? There's no dedicated events workgroup with a budget. In my personal opinion, it's a pretty decent use of reserve funds. At the same time, those always come with the disclaimer that you can only spend them once, and at some point, you won't have any reserves anymore. Yeah, not sure. I wanted to at least call out that conversation taking place in Ambassador General and would be great to have more opinions. Also noting that the timeline is relatively short, seeing this is within a month. Also, as was called out, I think again by Vanessa, yeah, on the visa side of things. Yeah, for, for some visa requests, three weeks is really not working. So time is somewhat running out, and I'm not quite sure how to progress. So yeah, I figured I would put it to the tunnel and get some input. So if anybody has some thoughts, also if you don't want to share them right now. Yeah, as mentioned, there's the Ambassador General channel. But if somebody has any thoughts, please feel free. Okay, there will be four more calls during this tunnel for input, so be prepared. But I'll take it as we'll continue on Discord for now. But I, I just wanted to mention it with a nice little flyer. Cool. Then I'm moving on. For two announcements from two different workgroups, one by the Marketing Guild. And Karim, if you want, you well, you're free to take the, take the floor. If you want, you can also screen share. Do let me know. If you are with us, Karim, are you in the house?
Yes. Hi, guys. GM, can everybody hear me?
Loud and clear, yes.
All right. So I just wanted to speak about the ongoing mascot competition we have, right? We've had some responses, but we also want more responses from like everybody, especially from community and also outside the community. So the initial deadline was on the 10th, but now it has been extended to the 20th. So yeah, we're looking forward to your creative submissions. Thank you.
I think, I assume the, the marketing channel on Discord is the place for that. And cool. Then moving over to Slides, an announcement on, from Education Workgroup side. Same to you. If you want to screen share, you can.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me?
Yep, all good.
All right. So it's basically the announcement that I wanted to make was for the certification program. I did pinged everybody in the Ambassador General and also in the certification program Discord channel. So the thing is that Education Guild has finally launched the certification program after all that time of continuous effort and also from the support of the Education Guild members and from the previous leads as well. Now it's finally live and every core contributor who is part of the ambassador program can take part in this certification program and yeah, basically get quite extensive knowledge of the spin-off projects of the SNET ecosystem. I have shared every single step to actually join the certification program in the channel, in the how-to-joint section of the ambassador program. You can check the certification program channel if you have the core contributor tag. All the instructions are shared there. But in case, if anybody is still having issues with joining it, I would like to share my screen if it's okay. I think I have access.
Yeah, I have mine, so it should be good.
All right. So I hope you can see my screen.
Yes, we can see the classrooms.
All right. So in the, if you go to the Discord in the announcement, the classroom code will be shared in the announcement, in the instructions of how to join the certification program. And the first classroom is going to be Sophia Wurst. As you can see on the left-hand side of, we have a total of 17 classrooms according to the 17 spin-off projects of the SNET ecosystem. And all of them have the necessary information for each one of the spin-off projects, which is displayed through an infographic and then a following up with a video. So since I have already shared the classroom number one code and everybody has access to it, specifically core contributors, I think I shouldn't be opening it in an open call. Or should I come from a different ID? Give me a second. All right, let me screen share again. All right, um, let me screen share again. Okay. Okay, there we go. All right. So, yep, so this is the classroom number one, uh, I changed the screen because it has the code to it, so if. That would basically leak out the code, uh, so this is the classroom and that's how it will show up, uh, when you join in. Of course, there's, uh, text messages for the people who have joined it, for the core contributors who have joined in and started. Uh, but if you go down, uh, there are three materials, uh, which each classroom have. Uh, basically involving an infographic, then a video, following up with the last, that's going to be the ten-question quiz. Related to that, uh, specific spin-off project. So, uh, the way to go would be first you go through the infographic, then the video. And when you have gone through these two, the, then you'll have the ten-question quiz. Which you can easily answer if you have gone through these two materials, um. And yeah, when you pass this, uh, quiz, uh, you're, the automation checks whether you have passed or not. And how much you have scored. Currently, we have the score mark of seven, uh, out of ten. Uh, so if you score seven out of ten in a specific quiz, you get the passing status and, uh, you automatically get sent the. Uh, code, uh, for the next classroom and that's how you basically progress. I'll show the dashboard. Okay, I think I'll have to share my, no, wait, wait a second. All right. So I hope you can see my dashboard. So this is the dashboard, uh, everything gets updated over here, uh, through automations. And, uh, yeah, basically, uh, everybody can check over here the status of, uh, how much the. How much participants are there, how much are participating and how much, uh, each participant have scored. Of course, you cannot see, uh, how much, uh, participants there are in each classroom. Because I see a lot of them are in the classroom number one, but most of them haven't started yet. Uh, but the ones who have started and have, are going through the certification program, uh, their scores are visible right here. And also their next classroom status is also visible right here. And yeah, uh, that's basically how you participate in the certification program. And the completion rewards for the top three are, uh, also including the monetary awards. So you receive the top, uh, the first person to complete the certification program receives one hundred and fifty dollars. Then it reduces to, uh, the second position to a hundred dollars and then for the third position it reduces to fifty dollars. Uh, but for everybody who completes the certification program, even after these, uh, top three, uh, positions. Uh, still get to receive the certified tags and the NFT, uh, when they complete the certification program. And of course, then extensive knowledge of the spin-off projects as well. So yeah, uh, that's all about the certification program and yeah, if you have any sort of questions, you can ask, we are right here. Or you can also reach out in the certification program channel and I'll be there to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you. And the education, the broader, the broader word group, this is, uh, effort done by a lot of people. And it's finally there, so yeah, congrats and, and, and well done. Um. Here we go again. Any questions in the room or remarks or?
Yeah, I just wanna add something, uh, because I talked with Slade on this. This is a great initiative and this, uh, regional expansions, so we need, we need the Spanish version already going on. So later we'll reach, uh, when we figure it out first the meta, but then this is definitely something that we. We need to work on how to use all the experience after you guys iterate this time, this first round probably is a good time to do.
Hmm, cool. Um, yeah, I could hop back to, um. Uh, the slides, but the last slide will be the open topic slide and seeing it's, um, forty-six past the hour, we do have fourteen more minutes. So yeah, this is the ultimate call out for, uh, any topics, any questions, any things we should discuss right now. Cause we most definitely can. That's it, all yours.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Hi, everyone. Uh, I just wanted to make like a reminder regarding the community initiative. Um, just to give like a reminder that people should, um, put in, send in their proposals. As we get close to the deadline of, um, October the thirtieth, that's all.
Um, yeah, but I, I earlier tuned, um, with you and, um. Um, you're across the time, right? But I'm, I wasn't sure. Uh. I'm confusing myself. Uh, what Karim mentioned. If that was the same topic, uh, well, anyway, all good, uh, yeah, and the. Uh, marketing channel has more details on, uh, what people can submit, right?
Yeah, so Karim's mention was about the mascot. Um, what I was talking about is the community's initiative. To engage the broader Singularity Net ecosystem.
Yes. Yeah, more clear.
Thank you.
All right, um. Yeah, it makes me wonder, I mean, I can ask another time if people have something to add, but I feel without people raising hands. I can kind of, uh, skip that question. Um, so. I reckon, uh, it would be time to wrap then. Uh, I request, uh, I say if you can, uh, share a link to the form on the chat for the community initiative. It's also two posts up in the marketing channel, uh, just, just saying, so for people that might lose the Zoom chat.
Yeah, it says posted in the marketing channel. Let me just tag, um, all, all the co-contributors to it so that. It can't be easily seen there.
All right, um, colleague.
I guess I'll do a shout out for tomorrow, for the, uh, the Death by AI game that we're going to play. Um, it'll be at, I believe it's fourteen hundred, is it thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred? Um, I believe in the Ambassador Events channel tomorrow on Discord, so please join us, so it's lots of fun. Um, we found out now, um, actually with TiVo coming in to the game last week. We finally realized that we can create our own scenarios, so you can come in and write. How you think that everybody should die and then we all have to write about it, so it's a nice little twist. But we look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow.
Yeah, cool, uh, I added it to the calendar, um. Yeah, that's on the events channel on Discord, so yeah, cool. All right, final check. Okay, then that's a wrap. Uh, thanks all for being here and, uh, sharing your time with us, um. Yeah, as mentioned, there's a ton of things, uh, tomorrow, there's, we started with Death by AI, then there's Education Work Group, then there's R and D Guild. And then there's the Book Club, so you won't have to be, uh, you won't have to be bored. And yeah, I'll spare you the rest of the upcoming, there's eight more calls, uh, this week only, so it's, uh. Tons of stuff happening, uh, do have a nice remainder of the Tuesday and hope to see you on one of the calls. Thanks a lot.
Thanks for hosting.